Yes. Ready to enter the question. Great, oh, welcome back. We have another five-minute break. I mean, we may, all right. We're going to discuss Agenda Item Number Nine. Uh, Mr. Karati.
I will turn this over to the City Attorney. He provided the drafts that we included in the app.
Okay, thank you. And the topic is?
The topic is the possible amendments to the City Charter relating to supermajorities related to the Act of War, possibly additional revenue sources, and then addressing the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board and the Planning and zoning Advisory Board roles designated by the Charter.
Very, thank you. Mr. Beadle. Want to do nine A, B, and C?
They're all nine As. And here we did nine B.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, they're, I mean, all the ordinance.
All right. Yeah. I mean, the first ordinance, or the first proposed ordinance, just talks about the supermajority for Ad-Loar Militage Increase. The second ordinance, second draft ordinance, talks about the primary sources of the city revenues. And, and speaking with Mr. Villan about it, the concern that he has relating, this was quote-unquote his ordinance, he has concern related to increases in revenue sources. And the budget is, as I described it to him after I started doing this, is the anticlimactic part. The, the important part is, is if you're going to raise revenues, you're going to have to adopt ordinances to increase those. For instance, the public service tax, which is the utility tax. In order, I mean, the city has an ordinance at 6% of just electric. So if the city decided to include other utilities subject to that tax, or the city wanted to raise from 6% to whatever, they would have to amend the actual ordinance. So that's what's dealt with in this, in this proposal. And the, the other issue that I talked to Mr. Villan about was, is whether or not the items preliminary to that needed to be done with too. And he said, no. And what I'm talking about with respect to that, just to use as an example, is for non- Ad-Loar assessments, if you're intending to potentially use that as a revenue source, the city count for, well, let's put it this way, if the council is going to consider using that in this, coming fiscal year, the 12, 13th fiscal year budget, the city council would have had to adopt a resolution, if I remember correctly, a resolution prior to December 31st indicating their intent to use that as a potential revenue source. The idea, the way that Councilman Villan's seeing this is that those types of preliminary matters don't have to be approved by some of the supermajority vote. It's the actual vote on the actual increase in the revenue source.
It'd be a little cumbersome, I think, if we did it the other way. This, this way it'd be great.
To leave the option available.
Right.
Would, to have the option available in budget considerations would just be regular majority, but if the.
But I've never done a budget cycle, so, you know.
I mean, like last year, we did the fire assessment. We, we passed that, I don't know if it's 411. I forgot the.
I, I don't remember if it's 411 or 32.
But, um.
2010.
Yeah.
We initiated, so you think we should just be 32 to have the assessment?
Not the intent.
The intent, not the actual. If, if we, if we adopt, if we increase the non-ad-Loar assessment rule by whatever the council may want to consider doing that, that will still require the supermajority vote. The actual imposition of the assessment, not the idea we might do it, which is a resolution.
Jim and I talked about that, and our thinking was that it allows us more flexibility to discuss the art of the, you know, the art of the, the possible. But when, when, when it gets down to brass tacks to actually saying, okay, we're going to do this, now that's a supermajority requirement.
Trying to think of another instance that we do that in, and that I have it. I know that there's another one where we can go 32, but we got to go 41, and it's not the contract.
My only question, Mr. Beadle, oh, I'm sorry. Are we to that?
Yes. Let me, let me give you a couple of, and then the last one is just to address the ability, the ability of the local planning agency to also do the.
I, I do have questions, Mam. You want to finish the first two?
Well, I was just going to go through and see what the ordinance is for. And then let me, let me tell you what the requirements, just the general requirements are, and then we can talk about the rest of it. The referendum question cannot exceed 15 words. And the, the little verbiage in there, the shall, we do X, Y, or Z, cannot exceed 75. So, I believe I did that. And then, and then in each one of them, I've included with the specific language and for the proposed charter, what the charter will read if it's adopted will look like. And then, now.
What kind of vote? Is it 50, 50, 51, 60, 40? Is it to approve of the majority?
It's just a majority.
It's not, it's not like the state. Okay, let's do the first one, ordinance number A. Or can we, can we do that?
That's fine, except that my question actually impinges on B, because it seems to me.
All right, let's do A and B together then, because they probably.
Yeah, they're kind of related. And, and my question was, in B, your first issue is any Ad-Loar militage rate. And in A, you're talking about Ad-Loar militage rate. So why is it in B if it's already in A?
Because the issue is, the issues were presented at the meeting that was discussed was Ms. Deanen wanted an ordinance that would weigh just to the military, and then you wanted one that dealt with all revenue sources.
So this isn't either-or issue? It's, it's either A or B?
Probably.
Okay, so that's the difference. If Ms. Deanen said, I only want it for militage rate, and then I said, but I want it also for fees.
Correct. And that's when you were citing some of those.
The hands were pumped up here.
With the handle lighter behind them. To think of a party.
Jim, oh.
That's fine. That explains it.
I have a question on the second, the second one. Arguably, when you say it's A or B, in theory, both of these could be presented as the same law.
Sure.
But I don't know what, but that's what I'm saying. I don't know what council wants.
But what's the sense of council? Do we want to go for the whole inch of lot, or just?
Paper.
Jim, A, A or B or both? On nine A, B.
Nine.
On the second page. You know, the big paragraph. The last, the last sentence, I don't understand. I was a little confused on that whole paragraph. It says, "The supermajority voting requirement shall not apply to a ordinance adopting or amending the annual budget."
That, that's the part I was just talking about a minute ago. But, but it also, when I said it was the anticlimactic part, and Councilman Villan said, the, when I talked to him, it was, again, he more concerned about the revenue source, and the revenue source approved by supermajority vote in the budget, it doesn't really matter at all. Because you can't, you can't adopt the budget unless the revenue sources were approved. Then they have to be approved by supermajority.
Yeah. In other words, that the revenue source will be the supermajority vote, and once that's passed, then it's just the budget. And so the budget is just.
And the budget can be a simple majority.
Correct.
And by state law, whatever really you adopt has to be adopted before you adopt the budget by law.
Correct. And we, we adopt militage. Do we do that in law?
No.
You, you set a tentative militage rate in law. But in, in, before September 15th, you adopt the non-ad-Loar rate for stormwater. And then the first, third, Wednesday, typically in September, you adopt the militage rate first, then the budget.
Okay. And that's, and that's the other example of the preliminary thing is what we do in Mayor Jim, when you adopt tentative militage rate, which is, you can't go above that, but that would be a priority of all.
But can we discuss, I know that Bill brought it up in the paper, brought it up about requiring a supermajority, really allowing the minority to control the budget. I think Florida today brought it up in the thumbs up, thumbs down.
Guess what?
Thumbs up. I know, but, but I know Bill brought it up too, and he's not here to discuss that, but does that have any, uh?
I don't understand the line of thinking.
I don't, I, okay. But, but I mean, two people brought it up, and that's what I'm trying to weigh also. Does that mean, do you take that to mean that? I don't know. That two people, if they go against it, then, then we go back to the budget? And you don't, you don't understand it because it's only on the way up, not on the way down?
And.
I didn't understand, I read that again today, and I'm trying to figure out why they said that, and what that meant.
I, I quit trying to understand what Florida today says.
Well, well, okay, but it was, it was, it was a comment. Bill made a comment too when I came. I mean, Bill, I'm trying to think of where he made his comment on Florida.
Well, I thought about it too, you know, the last meeting, you, you and Bill were, you seemed on the surface opposed to even the idea. You know who Phyllis Wood is? Phyllis Wood, she helped us get Pelican Park.
Yes, yes.
Been there a long time. She's, anyway, I, I did some work for her last week. She teaches, she goes to Melbourne Library once a week and teaches parliamentary law. She owns a business, I guess. She talks to homeowners associations and condo associations and things like that. And she, unsolicited, I didn't say anything to her, she just said, oh, yeah, you know, you guys are talking about this. And she says, I think that's a good idea. She said, because when you have different associations like that, just like Congress or something, there's certain items that are very important. It's not a 51% vote, it's two-thirds vote, or something like that. She explained to me how, how a lot of the meetings, these homeowners associations, it'll have, okay, we're voting on something, it's 51%, but if we have something major, we're changing the ordinance, we're changing the assessments or something, you have to have a two-thirds vote, or something like that. I think this is the context, we should look at this in also. It's not a matter of somebody having more control. We ultimately have to come up with, with the militage rate and the budget and things like that. We'll have to work harder, whatever it takes. But I know that, I think the first year we were on council, I think we were outvoted 3 to 2 on the militage rate and budget and things like that. One person decided for the entire city, hey, we're raising the militage rate.
That's right.
I think we have four of us to decide, rather than three of us. I don't think that it's shutting anything down or giving anyone more of an advantage in either direction. So that's why I'm doing this.
Now, is, is the militage rate an actual number?
It's, it's not a roll forward, rollback. It's the, it's the militage.
8.5 or 2? So, but this is going to be voted on November 6th of this year. There's not a problem. And I don't think that could have been. I mean, I'm not saying that could have been, it's, I don't know. I'm just saying that this is going to be on the ballot on the 6th.
It's not going to affect it to the left, like.
Next year, right?
13, 14.
13, 14.
But at least it gets it out there.
And if it's approved, right, so the people have a decision.
People, that's right.
All right, let me open this agenda item up a comment. Uh, we are considering, we are considering asking the attorney to take these drafts and make them first readings and second readings. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think we probably also have to give him some guidance with regard to A or B or both.
Okay.
Yeah, so what you're considering then now is, precisely what, are being rights, 255, deceded, or? And so what you're just, maybe I misunderstood. So what you're, what you're deciding now is a supermajority for which?
Both Ad-Loar, which is the normal 8.542, and then if we want to change, gain assessments or fees.
Good idea. You see what you're doing. You're not having a majority, a majority, which would only require 51%, and then 1% makes the decision. You're saying most of the people have to want this.
Well, it.
That's a supermajority.
Four out of five of us.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yes, we're only talking council.
You're talking just council. I absolutely agree with that.
But the referendum, but the referendum to change that, the charter reads it this way, is in your answer.
That's right.
Because the people vote.
And that's, so that brings up my, that brings up the question I was actually asking. So is that just going to be?
Simple majority.
Simple majority?
Well, on, on the members.
Of the general, of the general voters.
50.1%.
51%.
I guess the question though, Mam, is, is getting to what you're talking about first, is your, would you opt for A or B? In other words, would you?
I don't know what A or B says, and that's why I'm asking.
A is, A is a supermajority vote at council just for militage rate. B is a supermajority vote at council for militage rate assessments.
A, B.
B?
A, B. All of you, A, all of B.
Well, well, B covers A.
All right. All right. That's what I was trying to get straight in my mind, how you, if you were talking about supermajority for council, supermajority for the population. So 51% is all we really need to decide if you need a supermajority.
That's confusing, but.
Well, other public comment. All right. I have one more.
Data, Melvin, 690, Jen, Cor. I apologize for that. I said this last time, but I think this is an issue, like, I, I thought your analogy was wonderful from this Wood. But this is an issue that's so important that if somebody cannot convince four of you that we need to do it, then maybe it is not as important as they think. So when everybody comes with their wants and needs, they need to be able to plead a case that four of you saying, yep, you're right, even if we have to raise it, we're going to do that. So it's protecting us.
Thank you. Other public, other, other, other public comment. All right, let's bring it back inside A to B.
I think we, I think we want to be. If we're going to be serious about, if we're going to be serious about having to convince, having to bring a convincing case to council with regard to increasing revenue, that we have to cover all revenue sources.
If we, if we raised the stormwater from 65 to 66, are we saying that that's a four out of five?
Yeah.
That's a nine.
Right.
You're crooked in every, every.
All revenue sources. Major revenue.
Yeah, better than sure you have major revenue. Well, you don't want 2019s.
I, I'm not, they, they.
See, it's just not my wife.
Proximal. There's a lot in B. You know, just storm assessments, some of those.
Well, the issue, the issue is, what do you, I mean, I don't know if you can bring any emotions tonight.
Right.
You're trying to tell me from a consensus standpoint, which ordinance you want me to draft in 2020.
I, I, I know.
Isn't there, isn't there, and I'm still, again, I'm tired, isn't there something in the charter about emergencies and raising taxes? Did, you know, if there's an actual disaster, we're going to have to make that someone else.
I'll take a look at that. I don't remember. I agree that there's something in there.
Yeah, there's signs.
Maybe a bar, maybe a bar.
Yeah, maybe that.
A bar.
Okay, I just can't, I can't.
Emergency bars.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm looking at. Anything to do with this.
Okay, I should write the charter.
All right, B, I, I like A. B, I have to think about, but we can give direction to do B.
Well, the other thing is, you can do B, and if you guys during discussion decide you want to take something out of that, you want to take it out.
I'm not sure about, like, the utility tax from 6. We have talked about, every 1% is $800,000, is that right? No.
No.
No. Or 6 to 10 was $800,000.
Each, about $65,000, each 1%.
So 131.
260. For lifeline power, which is primarily electric, but includes natural gas, propane.
Here's, here's what concerns me about limiting the, the scope of the, of the revenue increase voting requirements. If we go with A.
We can jack it with you.
Right. The way we're going to get around A is we're going to jack everything else with a simple 3-2 vote. So if we're going to get serious about this, we have to be serious about all major revenue sources requiring any supermajority vote. Otherwise, folks are just going to be going around.
That's my.
I don't know, but what I'm saying is, is I can prepare B, and if you guys during the conversation decide to take one or somehow modify, you can always take some paths again. But if, if you have to start over again, so does B, let's go with A.
I like B, and I don't plan to take any of that.
That's a, that's a.
You have an assessment.
No.
Oh, all right.
Get through that.
I'm also leaning towards B.
Well, let's do it.
I think that we, it's a serious issue. One ordinance has an assessment for increase in militage rate, never been less than 41. I mean, you take it, is there?
Budget approval is usually 5-0. By that time, and then usually, well, sometime, there's been a couple of 3-2s raised in the village.
But. And actually, that's, if I remember, I may be wrong, that in a lot of, several times the votes been, there's been a different vote on militage versus budget when they get around to doing that.
How about the, like, does this include the, is upsetting the military?
No.
Or the preliminary joining?
That's excluded. That's what we're talking about. That's where, that's what I said to him, you said you didn't understand a lot.
Gives us room to talk.
Okay.
Get the art of the possible out.
You seem to be hesitant that, that these two, that are going to be here for sure, they're the only, for sure thing after the member, these two are under what, two more years? We may not be here, me, you, and Bill may not be. But anyway, I don't think these two are going to mess the city up. They're going to cut all revenue sources. I think they're pretty bright, and they do a ton of homework for, for very little pay, and I, I think we can.
I think you may, I think you may have this, this reading. I, 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 I never think that. But I, I do think, like I say, that there's a lot of power in this seat now, okay, that may not be controlled. And, and let's face it, none of us are going to be here in eight years. Let's hope not. I mean, I mean, up here, we'll be, but, so, so you want to establish things when you were the charter members. You know, I really think it's, I don't have a problem.
You know, I actually went back and looked at the charter amendments in 2009, and we were slew as well. It's, you know, they all grouped together and just said, Joe, we're going to clean up the charter. Well, I'd like to clean up the charter as well.
I know, we had.
We're designated as a bird and wildlife sanctuary. Seriously?
They were, they were marked, and they were 78, 80%. They were, they were slammed over.
I, I would, I would ask that if any council members have anything that they want to talk about tweaking that, let me know your email.
So we're going to go with B and C?
I, I want to talk about C.
Well, I have to talk about C.
C's fine.
Sorry.
So B will be finalized and brought back to the. Okay?
Okay, on C, I'm there with you. Do we even need to have the committee or the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board and the Planning and zoning Advisory Board in the charter? Can't, that we have the ability to create?
At least by ordinance.
Boards by ordinance? And, and.
Well, I mean, we didn't delete it. I mean, I just.
Because I think all the other charters are written like that. And then we just figure out the ordinance, which one. But I, I think, I think you would probably want to stay with the Planning and zoning Advisory Board. I've never had, and I do work all the time in Florida, where you go to a comprehensive planning advisory board for recommendation, and then go to the city, or the Board of County District, go to the planning board.
Do you want to just say something like, combine, like, if it isn't C and D, and just say the city shall have CPAB and a PZAB with 50?
I don't think it needs to be in the charter. I think it just has to be that the city, there's other language in other charters where we, we have the ability to create boards.
Well, no, that's what, oh, you mean just generally?
Yeah.
I was just going to say the city shall have, well, let me ask you this question.
I don't understand why it's in the charter at all, actually.
All right. All right, then we can just leave it.
And I've looked at other charters, and I, I don't understand, I don't understand. Or a comment, I guess a combo, maybe two. I don't.
So you would like to see this to be that board creations should be moved out of the charter into the council?
And that would be in the charter. That the city council has the ability to create.
Well, that's what I was going to say, these two boards specifically. But you're talking about, you want a general charter. Okay. It would, it would delete this, but what you're talking about, general empowerment, empowerment of the council to create whatever boards it desires.
Launch boards, yes. And then we, we can do it.
We do that now. Because we have to have the LPA, I mean, we have to have the CPAB. By statute, by statute, we have to have CPAB. I mean.
Planning.
Yeah, that's a CPAB. Well, the local planning agency, that is our local planning.
Is that in the charter?
I think we do that now with our ad hoc boards. I mean, we create. Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll.
Is that okay with the standard of the period?
If I understand it correctly, so what we're saying is, is that what we would like to see is a general statement in the, in the.
Something.
Charter that says that, that council has the capability to stand up and sit down boards.
Correct.
Okay. Creating the leaders.
By order, yeah, by order.
It's late.
And then also to.
And then they need to eliminate these, the, the two provisions that are currently in the charter regarding the LPA and the.
Because the point is, is, is kind of the consolidator must be long, you know, building being open, staff time, and, and we had talked about that in the beginning, I guess, last year.
All right, this would, this would, good. The way I'm looking at it, we only have 12, 13, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21. I didn't do 14?
No.
I vote 14, Fire Vehicles was not going to be on the.
Received notification today at 3:00 PM that we, we could expect a whippery of interlocal agreement either by the close of business today, which I don't think we receive, and if we didn't receive it today, we will have it tomorrow, and it will be on the next agenda.
Okay. These are quick, I just made them. Okay, Agenda Item Number 12, Mr. Karati. We are looking to set up a couple of meetings.
Yes. Our consultant, Jim LaRue, would like to meet with the, the city council regarding a number of issues, the recommendations from your Comprehensive Planning Board on Complan Amendments, some that have a fundamental impact regarding transportation concurrency, school concurrency, and also to take a look at amendments to the future land use map as it applies to Pelican Coast. He's available to meet with the city council any days in May, except when they're listed the 8th, 15th, 17th, 18th, 30th, and 31st.
You know, I'm going to say this again, I think we're putting the cart before the wars on this, because the CRA process is going on, and they might have recommendations for what future developments, that might be put into the CRA. I, I don't even know that area.
Did, did we want to get moving on the 100 acres, and that's why we're doing this, as opposed to waiting?
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking about, but I don't, I, I don't know if that area is going to be put into the community redevelopment district or not.
So we can build 100 acres without CRA input?[1706.22]
Well, I guess we can change the future land use map.
Because I think we want to move in that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And the, I think also the, the need to sit down with the hunt pinnacle folks and see where they're at, and involve, and let them know what the council's thinking, because, you know, clearly, we don't want to just send them a notice as.
So here's your, here's your.
Here's your, here's your. So I, I, I think it would be beneficial to, to do, begin that process.
Do we wanna sit with them first before the workshop, before the?
Well, exactly, the, you know, Jim would meet with, I, I suggest one member from the city council, myself, and, uh, and Jim sit down with representatives from hunt pinnacle and talk about the process and some options.
You took a vote, you know, you said they need to sort of get.
So let, let's, let's begin that process before we set the date, so let us come back to the council after we meet with hunt pinnacle to see where they're at, because, you know, they may have some new ideas since lighting science and some of the other things that Laura was working on are no, appear no longer on the table.
Did you ever talk to them about the money that would be for this?
I've talked to CPA about it and said, come up with some ideas with some ideas you suggested, I can come up with ideas of how we can spend without taking it back.
Just a clarifying point, the, the comprehensive plan draft that came out in an email, this, I think it was, uh, late last week, um, that is, uh, that was not, well, when I went to the comprehensive planning board, I thought that last meeting was continued. In other words, it never finished, remember?
No, they, um.
Or did they finish one and I wasn't there?
To move forward.
With the comprehensive, cause I'll tell you, I went back and looked at that comprehensive plan, and there's lots of stuff in there that I could have sworn was discussed to be either taken out or modified, and, and wasn't, it's still in there. Okay, but I, I don't remember that, that, I don't remember that meeting ever being continued.
Let me, I don't know that, I usually do not attend the comprehensive planning board meetings.
You know what I'm talking about?
The other one that was doing whatever else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, who were you talking about, uh, west of San Patrick?
Yeah, and, and they never finished the meeting, they said, this is getting, we gotta work on this, it's, it's too tough to do that, now we're gonna continue.
Let me get a report back on that, but does the council any objections with Cheryl, myself, and, and, and the sort of group meeting with the folks from Pelican Coast, and Matt will for that, some information on that.
Uh, the other one you have on there is levels of service. I know you had a staff meeting yesterday, what are you thinking?
We would like to begin it after the beginning of June, uh, May is filling up, uh, there's some leave time, uh, and several department heads will be gone, so, uh.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have enough time before the budget process, I mean, to do that early June, probably.
Let, let's come back to the next meeting, also, one, Councilman Billman suggested that we designate a new name to it rather than levels of service, I can't recall what you said, but.
Department budget plans.
Department budget plans.
My, my feeling was, if we keep it levels of service, that's just gonna encourage more of the same thinking, what I'd really like to do is say department budget plans, we know that the situation we're in, folks are gonna need to come forward, uh, the K PAG is giving, hopefully gonna give some pretty valuable, uh, advice and insights that, that, that the department heads can use to bring the budget plans to us and say, hey, we've got some, some new ways of doing business, we've got some things we gotta do, if there's some issues here, we gotta take care of, you know, cuts or whatever. But I just didn't want it to be a same old, you know, we're gonna come through this, cause that's the way we've always done it, I want people to start thinking out of the box.
But it would include, uh, if they have any personnel issues, if they need somebody or, or they.
Or better yet, better yet, would be, hey, I can do this job and this job with this person, or with this, with this kid, it's, oh, yeah, bring the, yeah, the personnel is gonna, I mean, let's face it, folks, eighty percent of our budget goes to personnel, the cost, I mean, eighty percent of our budget goes to personnel costs. So we ain't gonna, we ain't gonna do a lot of change into our debt issue unless we really look at the way we use our people and, and those sorts of things, so I'm hoping that that comes out in this session.
Both of these items have been, like, reported so long, I can't ask. Agenda item number thirteen, disgusting action on city's public records, now thi- this is, uh, and, and A and B, so what's going on with public records?
Public records, uh, this was an item requested, uh, to be placed on the agenda, um, the suggestion was that the city utilize a form similar to what the Bard County utilizes, now place it on the city's website, that persons requesting public records would fill out a form, so that it would more accurately reflect exactly the, the records they're requesting, and also there would be a record of the request. Um, as we've known from looking at the public records policy, the city cannot specifically request an individual wanting public records to fill out a form, uh, many jurisdictions have them, and it's a matter of procedure, most of the people do, uh, file the form, uh. Internally, the city clerk, when she receives a request for public records, probably ninety-five percent of the folks requiring public records are known to us, uh, we do keep a log of the name and the specific records being requested, um, the issue being, uh, having provided you with the copy of the public records procedures that we have, is there a desire to put in place the form, and are there any suggested amendments to our public records policy? It's been in place for some time, we tweaked it once or twice, um.
I think we're kind of helping ourselves out here already, are we not, with the transparency page? I mean, we're putting a lot of stuff up there that folks can go get, that's public records, that they don't have to ask, they don't have to come ask Mother May I for.
Yeah, and, and whenever a citizen or a council member requests particular information, it's always uploaded to the transparency site, so it is a work in progress. Uh, you know, I, I, I think one of the next items is really gonna address it, the majority of public records requests relates to emails, over the past probably eighteen months, that's been where, uh, the city clerk's office has been voting its time providing public records, and, uh.
I'm thinking more about technology and having the link to fill out the form, not necessarily, you know, so-and-so calls, and you don't wanna be disclosed, but, you know, you can do it mobile, and the form is there, you fill it out, and then you attach, uh, what, usually they go through the clerk's webpage for public records requests, and then you put the policy, part of the whole transparency process.
And as it became apparent that we didn't have the policy in the, uh, very invisible place.
Two seconds rather than pick up the phone and call or come by.
I, I, I would, uh, it, ask if, you know, Palm Springs has a lot more fees, if you're more likely to incorporate some of those fees, uh, then we could do that too.
And Palm Springs, I think, has a better forum than Redbar.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I just.
Yeah, that, that's good, okay, and is there another recent answers, will be publicized, but I want to, there's a B on this, disgusting action on policy and council emails on the city website, what's up with that? Adam?
Whoa, Adam. Uh, I've been re- re-reading, uh, some, some options for putting emails on the website, I think they have one, uh, uh, Elatual County Board of Commissioners, uh, they have all their incoming emails on the website, you can go to this website, click on a commissioner's name, see all their incoming emails, but there are some restrictions, that you only see the incoming emails, you don't see the outgoing ones, uh, there's no filter, so you see spam messages, we can get appropriate messages. Uh, you have to log in if you wanna actually see who sent the emails, and that's prevent, uh, uh, automatic program from taking emails, addresses, and emailing spam lists, and, uh, it shows that if, if there's an attachment, but it doesn't include the attachment. So if you want the attachment, or if you want the replies to the email, you gotta make a public record request. So looking at that, looking at other options that I found on the internet, um, I'm coming, I'm coming to the conclusion that we need to do some updating to our general email, because we're using a very, very simple email system, and in order, rather than having, uh, trying to, trying to get something else into this system, I think we need to look at a total email package that would allow us to, uh, better control our emails, because we're having some, some issues with the space of emails that are taking on our servers, and we are driving the emails, and the, the time it takes me to, to retrieve emails. So if we have a total email fix, then, then we can also have something where we could upload emails to a website, but we start making some decisions about the restrictions, do we have all the emails outgoing, getting them going, and how do we control, uh, uh, access if people want to try to get email addresses and so forth.
It will be a massive undertaking.
I don't have a problem, but again, it is, it is a massive undertaking, and I was concerned, and Laura and I talked about this last week when I was, um, in assisting with the community redevelopment webpage, um, she's the records clerk, so I'm gonna let her discuss what some of the records.
There's a lot of exemptions too, to know if there's any lawsuits that are involved, uh, if it qualifies the information that the police department will give to a council member, um, I think, and it's the time that it takes to learn and look all the redaction processes up as far as the exemptions, you know, is it just this clinic's, the court's responsibility, you know, who's gonna be redacting that before putting it on the web? Um, and that's time intense, uh, so that's something that really needs to be considered, not just, I mean, you can put emails up without a major problem, but it's the redaction of the exemptions that you have to really buy back.
What are some of the exemptions?
Any police officers, firefighters, uh, social security members, bank accounts, if you have, like I said, an existing court case, a lawsuit, any surveys or plans that deal with city buildings, um, and those are just to name a few, uh, I'm talking about the.
And then you have personal email.
Yeah.
And who's gonna decide what's a personal email, that you're not gonna allow to be put on the site, and what a part of the message is, is personal, and part of it's related to the city, and.
I mean, you, you show Elatual County here, but, um, maybe they have the I T staffing that can support putting all that information on the web.
Not sure.
Like I said, I, I wonder if Michael up or not.
I don't either, I'm not sure it's worth the effort.
But that's a big undertaking, that we're, we're not set to do it this time, and, and, and there's also dollar involved, and if the council's interested in this, I would recommend that we wait till some of the more important items are, are achieved.
So if someone comes in and wants all the emails, who now looks through them? You.
Lenore and Adam, they're working on the. You said, I think that there's been a lot of requests in the last eighteen months for emails.
Yes.
So if someone comes in and wants to get his emails from the last week, is that to Lenore to, and Adam to go through and pick out which ones, or?
Explain how you do that.
When I, when I get a request, I simply do a search on what they're asking for, and then I put that into a PDF file, I don't look through the emails, um, and I don't edit them.
So someone might request, uh, corresponds between these two, and then you're gonna pull those up, and some that's specific?
Yeah.
How do we know some of the exempt items Lenore was talking about to go out?
Yeah.
Cause I mean, there have been some things that Mike has told me, and the chief has told me, that probably.
But those probably would not be exempt, I mean, I don't send out too much that's exempt, and so, you know, it's sensitive, and, you know, I wouldn't wanna post those on websites, but a push game to shove on a public records request, you know, on some of these investigations or, um, there, but clearly, some things would slip through your cracks.
If it means anything, I, he's absolutely correct, what he said, there are things that I send to him that I would like to, you to know as leaders of the city, because I know that you will take that information, you'll understand it, and you will pass it on, that doesn't need to be passed on, but you need to know it.
Yeah.
If I knew that those emails were gonna be public record, I'm not gonna send them.
See, that's.
I, I just, I'm just not in your bill.
You're a public record.
Why? That's exactly right, that they're public record, but I don't want somebody to go, hmm, let me come in.
Investigations you've told us, and, and thank you for doing it, but that would be probably not a good thing to get out.
So having somebody out that's confidential, you know, investigations and secrets that.
I also raised the issue, would, would residents be uncomfortable emailing their elected officials if they knew their email address and what their input is to the public official, or should we post it on our website? I, I know that that would be a problem, I mean, people sometimes are reluctant to identify themselves when they, for example, follow a garbage complaint, and I would tell them, well, how can you resolve your problem, you don't cut us where you live, you know, I mean, that's how reluctant folks are.
Well, it's, and I'm not opposed to this happening, um, I don't have an issue with my incoming or whatever outgoing email that is non-exempt going out there, but I just don't think we have the staff, the manpower, and, or the money to upgrade the system.
Yeah, I don't think we, yeah, we don't have the right software, so we'd have to do that.
Actually, I'm hearing from Adam that we're, it's inevitable, we're probably gonna have to upgrade the system soon, it's, it's getting pretty volatile.
Great, let me, uh, the council is, is not gonna take any actions on twelve, thirteen, A, and B, uh, I think on public records, did you want to say?
I had one more quick thing.
Oh, wait, wait, I.
I don't know, I don't know if it's just me, or, or everybody in council, um, I get almost daily junk mail.
Yeah.
For Viagra.
I swear I've never bought it, but anyway.
Okay, I, I get that, I'm gonna read it, oh my god, anyway, there's, there's junk email, I guess you can't filter that stuff.
From the same person.
I get daily, I get a few in the pharmacy hours every day.
Yeah, there is a lot of stuff coming through that we should not be getting. I'm worried, dude.
That's just not right.
But back to the, the records form, I would, the public records form, I would like to see a form generated, and then the policy attached, as part of the.
You wanna see which form?
The public records.
Okay, we'll leave that up to Lenore, we'll put it on the to-do list, and we'll, we'll let you know.
Put it on her page, she can filter it through, and if you don't, what your name or the background, you can call when I request it.
And maybe that's a good compromise here, you know, we just make it easier for the public to, to fill out the form, and they can fill it out and ask for whatever they want, and then they can call, right?
Any, any public note on these two items? Hey, we're heading to south to, uh, Barry Island, yeah. Mr. Karate.
Uh, we received a, hopefully, final request from U S Board on geographic names, uh, regarding the naming of the Barry Island, it would appear that the council has four options, approve Ponte d'Elia Island, approve Ice Island, or leave island unnamed, or take no action, and the, the board will interpret that as the, uh, uh, no opinion.
Well, I have never seen so many emails regarding, uh, or anybody.
And all that bank going for all of the.
Yeah, um, pretty amazing, but the majority, overwhelming majority was to leave the island unnamed.
I, I, I did, I read them all, zero, seven, I mean, zero for Ponte d'Elia.
Right.
Seven, uh, I got for Ice Indians, but overwhelming, you know, cause a lot of them went back and forth, well, you know, almost two times, you leave it unnamed.
And, and even the ones that said Ice Indians, there were multiple of them that said, or, just leave it unnamed.
Right, yeah.
There was no Ponte d'Elia. So, uh, if it's okay with you, I'd like to write a letter saying that we would like to leave the island unnamed. Please go on, so we can pay it.
I, I would like.
But we'll have public, I will have public comments, but is that okay?
Yeah.
As opposed to not doing anything?
Right.
So I'll make the motion that, that we leave the island unnamed.
And that's an.
I'll say no matter.
Okay, full of comments, all right. Anybody that disagrees, anybody disagrees with this?
The show, for it, you're recording audio. No, I, I agree a hundred percent, um, I, I just, what I don't want to have happen is for us to sit back as a city and not respond in any way, which would then open the door for the, the Ponte d'Elia being forced on us, that is my only concern, not naming it is just fine, it's, it's worked as Barry Island all this time, just do something so that they can't worm back in, and we'll end up with Ponte d'Elia.
We have strong feelings, and it should not be named.
Yes.
Or not named, that for sure.
Other public, by the way, I was in Ponte d'Elia's house last week, Dominican Republic, and he said to say hi.
Did he, once his name kept over there.
I know, I know, uh, anybody else? All right, let's bring it back, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ian, seconded by Councilman Billman, to send a letter, uh, saying Satellite Beach, uh, says unnamed, to keep the island unnamed, Lenore?
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Billman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Proctor?
Yes, and the motion passes, and I.
I can have that out by tomorrow.
Earlier in the morning, that is great. Number eighteen is budget issues, anything, Mike?
Uh, I don't wanna spend a lot of time, I put together a packet of information regarding a, uh, proposal that's circulating among some city, and it's for informational purposes at this time, for an implementation of a referendum question on a one, uh, cent sales tax surcharge in the Bard County, um, if it proceeds to where it's a specific proposal, the city council will be asked to consider whether you support that referendum or not, and there are consequences to supporting it or not supporting it, and we'll have more information, but I did wanna give you the preliminary tactics, in the case you got a telephone call where someone inquired, that's what it is.
It's one percent, one cent.
It's, it's one percent.
One percent, you said one cent.
Did I?
Yes, one percent.
No, it is one cent.
One cent.
Says one percent sales tax.
If, if, instead of a six percent sales tax, it would be a seven percent, it's one, one penny on the dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's.
What are they gonna do with that one?
They're gonna waste it the same way they wasted.
Sir, uh, excuse me, okay, go ahead. I talked with, uh, one of our county commissioners on, on this specific issue, and, and he said, hey, tell everybody it's not even on our radar, I can tell you that we do not have to vote, that nobody, right now, on town, on the county commission will vote for this, he says, tell your people not to worry about it.
I think you are correct, and, uh, the issue is, you know, local governments can, uh, take action independent of the county commission to get it on the ballot, it takes, you know, a percentage of, of the municipal governments representing, uh, the incorporated population, so it's, it's being worked through, uh, matter of fact, I had one opportunity to attend a meeting when I was at the town last week, Brenda attended in my absence.
I think if we put, if we put more of our effort into cost control versus looking for new revenue sources, we'll be a lot better off, because I think. Because I think it's...
I do have a question. Jim, uh, is, you know, the four-fifths supermajority? That is probably just going to muddy everything, but do you want to do that for raises in county taxes too? I mean, you know, like this, would this require for us to tell the county that we'd like to do this? Four fifths?
Well, it takes a run, run approved. So I don't know whether you want to say that we have to approve it in our city or what. I mean, I don't, I don't think you want to...
Well, even, even...
The issue is, well, the issue is if it's approved.
It's gonna happen.
If you don't...
Right, but we have to recommend if we want it on there or not.
We'll have it. Yeah, the basic, the basic premise is that if it gets approved, the county approves it, I guess, I, I mean, I don't know what your real question is. I mean, arguably, I mean, we, you said we don't want the money, the money's going to go somewhere.
No, 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 I'm saying if the council says that we want to send to the county a null response, we do not favor this, is that supermajority because it is increasing taxes? Or should it be just a...
Regular majority.
A, a majority vote. And, and just, it, it's not going to happen, but something that we...
Well, that's, to me, that would be preliminary, because you're not actually voting on it. Because, and actually, the council's never been voting on it, because that's going to only be approved by our own.
Okay, okay.
So I mean, that, I mean, that would be my thought process. Well, I trust the county commissioner I talked to who said it ain't going to happen, so...
I'm not going to say it. All right, appointment to boards. Uh, it is the first, uh, meeting of the month, so we do appointments to boards. And Lenore, you have, uh, the floor.
Um, I contacted all of the reappointments, um, we have in the packet, and, uh... I got a confirmation that Jane Mandeville would love to serve another term, same with Leslie Castaldi.
Okay, let's, let's learn to tie, let's see, communication board.
Jane Mandeville is a master gardener. She really contributes a lot to the communication board from my perspective as a secretary for a few years on that board. Um, and she has agreed to serve another term.
Okay, so we make a motion, we reappoint our member Jane Mandeville to the communication board.
For term ending... For, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for term ending six one fourteen.
I have a motion by Councilman Billman, seconded by Vice Mayor Rhodes. Any public comment? Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean? Uh, yes. Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Fontaine?
Yes, uh, next.
Okay, the next one is Leslie Castaldi. She is currently the chair of the Board of Adjustment, and she was in agreement to serve on another term on that board.
I, I do have a question. Do we have any alternatives on, or, or, or it's on that board? Sorry, it's okay.
Do they have any coordinates on board of adjustment?
Yeah.
They have positions, whether it's their field, I don't know.
Leslie was here tonight. I just, yeah. She has the question about...
That's a question about...
Very interesting. She's listening right through the waves in front there.
I'm waiting for it. And I can wait.
Get out of there.
Yes, we know. You have Suzanne Clunden and Tom Willett?
As alternate?
As the two alternates, yes.
And how long has Leslie been on the board?
Since two thousand one.
Wow.
Eleven years.
And what I'm kind of going, going with this is maybe rotating some of these people out.
I was thinking the same thing. You get new, new blood in there.
I think she's the chair of the Board of Adjustment.
And, and they don't need them.
But it's not the point, is you have the two alternates.
Well, I just want to get...
I mean, I was appointed an alternate to the Board of Adjustment, and then I have elected the city council. I'd be sitting there for eleven years trying to run the board.
You know, but I have seen Leslie in action on her board, and she is a powerhouse and very, very, very studied. And, uh, I'm not sure that she, uh, would be the one that you would send to a alternate position or you would approve that.
But, um, how long has Tom been an alternate?
Tom, two thousand eight?
And what about Susan?
Suzanne just got on her in two thousand eleven.
One of the things you can do more than you want to talk about these is to, if they would like to move to another board that has a regular position, uh, sometimes we ask a alternate if they'd like to move to a board that has a regular one.
Well, one of the things I have on the list, the future list, is discussing this process, because it's really not fair to Tom, who's been an alternate since two thousand eight. I mean, I know there are a lot of people in the community that have tried to be appointed to boards that are told no or alternate, and, and maybe they need to come back. Maybe we need to do a different process where we go back to the alternate and say, well, you'd like to serve on a different board. There's an open position.
I wish that term was...
A permanent, you're not a permanent position, but an open position.
I mean, that would be good, too.
That's fair.
Yeah, I like that. And Scott just said term limits.
I do, too. I like that, too.
But...
Is that normal? Do you have term limits on... Well, this is a plaza you did to board.
You can sit up for a year. But, but, but I do like the idea of, of, of allowing folks who have been alternates for a while, because really, they're kind of the, you know, the, the stand-ins, if you will. I, I think giving them an, an option to actually start serving on the board is a wonderful thing. Can I put in, want to do something, I guess? The, the, the issue that you have is... Is that sometimes, and I don't know how often it really happens, but it does happen where you can get a whole bunch of new members on, on a board. And I don't know how this speed boards are, but, you know, one, you may have only one real strong person on the board, and that's who the chair is. You know, and again, I don't, this board, I don't really know that much about, but, I mean, other than who's on it, but, you know, I don't know what the dynamics of the board are. Uh, and, I mean... And this is my, I should know, but I've only been to the board. Well, I mean, Code Enforcement Board, I mean, you know something about that. I mean, but, but the board, no, but my point is, is that, you know, you have somebody that, or some people that have been on there, and they basically move the meeting along. For lack of a better way of putting it, I mean, some of the stuff, they kind of get bogged down in meetings, don't move along, because you get somebody that's new that's running the meeting that really hasn't any experience around a meeting. And that just creates other issues. And I'm just saying that, and I'm not saying not to, I'm just saying if you want to rotate them out, is make sure...
Don't rotate it to your chief position.
You can just make sure who it is you're rotating out, that's all I'm saying.
That's the problem, we're never looking at the board as a whole. It's just someone comes up for reappointment, and, oh, it's a customer, it re...
Yeah.
So can you just, I don't have the list, you know, you know, which...
That's, that's my perspective. Yeah, actually, actually, I like the concept that, that we don't rotate a alternate into the chief position. Because, because the chief position is, should be grown from within. In other words, you know, it's usually going on...
Okay, let's just do this, let's, let's just go down this list. Leslie, oh one. Richard, oh five. Robert, oh three. Christine, nineteen ninety five. David, I don't know who's, oh three. And then recently Suzanne, eleven, and then Tom, oh eight. So you're talking about some history that I'm sure all these folks have been there long enough to know how to put the board along. You're talking a long time, five, three, ninety five, oh three, years. I don't think that, I don't think that's fair to the community. I don't know.
Leslie is a, uh... Do we know a penalty lawyer she's... What her practices do?
I, I really don't.
It's not like against Leslie, I don't know Leslie. I'm sure she's been on regular chair, but you go...
General practitioner now.
So, so let's make a, make a motion sometime. I mean, if, 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 if the motion is made that we don't retain her, then we have to make another motion to put somebody on, right?
We have to. I mean, there's no...
Sorry. That's not the kind of...
That's what I mean, it's not on...
The charter handles who becomes the chairman, uh, then just...
No, no, I mean to replace, to, to put somebody else on the board. Not, not making the chairman, but put somebody else on the board.
Can you move an alternate to a regular, a regular to an alternate?
Let's just do this. I would like to see this issue brought up on the agenda, the next agenda, so that we can deal with this. And that's, this has been on the board a long time, and I just think we need to cycle some new people that put in applications on these boards.
No, I don't have an issue with that one or the other. But the issue is, is, I mean, from the staff perspective is for us to come up with some sort of a policy. What is it kind of that you're looking for? Are you looking at the term limits, or, or somebody's going to be the, you know, or even, and I don't remember what all the procedures are for each board, obviously.
Well, I think, I personally think...
Or have a chair, or have a person be the chair, basically would require a rotating chair. I mean, that's another thing, too. I don't know what council's perspective is, and that's, I mean, we can draft a policy, but we need to come up with...
I mean, I think interview Suzanne or Tom, and you should have brought back all three of those people so that we could interview them, see who's the best candidate for that permanent position. I just...
Has the city clerk, I'll bring up one point. My concern is if you don't reappoint, and there starts to become that, we need to get the applicants to apply for these boards, to fill those vacancies. Even if you move, and the alternates are willing to move up, because you need to really ask them. They may travel a lot.
No, I understand, but I just think that's why I've had it on the future agenda. We need to talk about this process for appointing new little boards. I think it's been on there for six weeks already. Um, because it's, it's just, I can't...
Okay, uh, what, what is, what would you like to do?
I'll, I'll make a motion to reappoint a regular member, like the Castaldi to the Board of Adjustment for one year. I'm sorry, for term ending six one, twenty fifteen.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Billman, seconded by Vice Mayor Rhodes. Any public comment?
Michelle Franch, two forty, Colonial Court. I kind of believe in what you're saying. I think that, that there needs to be a term limit. I don't think people should be on boards for fifteen years. I think that, that defeats the purpose. I think we've already seen that some of these boards could be monopolized by people, which have their own agenda that they direct and kind of, you know, im- imply that that's the way that it needs to be done, because it's always been done that way. And without getting new blood in, you're not going to get a, a fresh way of thinking about dealing with issues.
Thank you. A little, a little comment?
Senator Billman, six ninety Jackson Court. Um, I also agree, and you might start getting more people interested in boards if they actually thought there was the, uh, ability to get on the board. Because I know I applied for a number of boards, and it was just nev-, there was never an opening. There was never an opening, there was never an opening. So I, I think we have dissuaded a number of people, um, that they just don't even show an interest because they've never been able to get on it, and so now they don't even try. So I think if we start getting the mindset out and people start realizing that, that maybe there's going to be a little more dynamic turnaround, or people influx in or out, or something like that, I think you might get people interested.
Thank you. Public comment? Okay, Lenore, uh...
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Fontaine?
Yes, and, uh, yes, unanimously, Code Enforcement Board.
Um, Mr. Damon did not respond to my email, so I don't know if he's willing to be reappointed. And, uh...
Do we have alternates on that board?
That's not on that list. Actually, no, it's all seven members, so they're all regular. And we already have a vacancy on there, so, um...
What's the minimum that the board can have?
Four. And you have one, two, three, four. You would have five members if you did not reappoint, as you have. We've got, um, and, and again, I don't know these folks because I didn't get to interview them, but Richard? Mrs. President Ralph, Richard Ralph.
It's Richard Ralph.
Ralph, Ralph Richard.
It's Richard Ralph.
Nineteen ninety six, appointed to the board.
I, I think in general, what we need to do is some sort of a, um, a recruiting process uh, to, to, to try to get new blood. And I, I know we had kind of a flurry there for a while, but things have kind of died down here recently. So maybe we need to somehow advertise on the, on the webpage to get folks to start putting in for boards. But in this particular case, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to make a motion.
Anybody? All right, next, Lenore?
Um, Franch is applying in Advisory Board. Mr. De La Rosa opted not to serve another term, and Mr. Fergus was more than willing to serve another term.
So Jerry's, uh, Jerry's not going to, no? He's not. All right. And, uh, what's the status of the board?
No less than six members, maximum ten members, and we have eleven. Well, did you just... Maximum of ten members or less than six members, and we have eleven.
At one time, they had alternates, and they, they, I think they reworked the charter, and they were going to be paid attrition. No, not going to make a motion. Well, Jerry, Jerry said that he's, so it's, he's...
So regardless, there's plenty of people. It's the minimum six.
So, for about ten.
Good.
A lot of people.
Next.
Well, no...
Okay, any, uh... Nope. All right, uh, we will press the Library Board.
Barbara Stasco is also willing to serve another term on the library board.
She's chairman of the Library Board, does a very good job.
I'd like to make a motion, reappoint regular member Barbara Stasco of the Library Board for the term ending five five, two fourteen.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion by Councilman Billman, seconded by Vice Mayor Rhodes. Any public comment? Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean? Uh, yes. Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billman?
Yes.
Mayor Fontaine?
Yes. Motion passing unanimously, uh, Lenore? Continue.
Okay, um, Jennifer Meyer, who was also willing to serve a lot.
Make a motion to reappoint regular member Jennifer Meyer to the same silent part committee, uh, determining six one, two thousand fourteen.
Oh, so, uh, second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Rhodes, seconded by Councilman Billman. Any public comment? Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean? Uh, yes. Councilwoman Billman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Fontaine?
Yes, and that motion does pass unanimously. Anything else?
Councilwoman Billman?
No, we're good. Thank you. All right, let's, uh...
Agenda items for next regular council meeting, to reach a, a schedule for sixteen May.
And Mr. Karate, uh, we handed out a new proposed agenda items. Uh, one item that would maybe add it, uh, we received several inquiries today from residents who were following the action yesterday at the county commission meeting where the, uh, commission adopted a resolution providing for an opt-out for those residents who, uh, do not want a smart meter in their homes. Uh, so I'll be meeting with some citizens in the next week. It may be on the agenda, um, for the next meeting. Do we have smart meters in the city yet? I don't know if they've been... I don't know if they've been installed yet or not. You know, we've all got them cards, but, uh, I don't know.
You got one, did you?
It's a digital meter, right? Yes.
Yes.
Are they asking?
Oh, really?
You have, you have to ask them to opt out. Yeah. And, and the resolutions that the county, uh, commission adopted yesterday, because of the ones who have been in Newark-Jackson, that FPL will move it, remove it at their cost and opt out home loan cost. But this all, that's sort of the Public Service Commission. Uh, cities and, and the county has no race before it's voted into that issue.
There's really nothing there on that agenda, right?
Well, it's a resolution encouraging the Public Service Commission to take this action. You know, the, the discussion was quite lengthy at the county commission meeting regarding privacy issues, uh, and then also health concerns, uh, and interference with other electrical device. I mean, the speakers had a number of issues.
So, so then what the county said is they want the cities to come back with, with separate resolution?
No, the, well, were several residents in our city, obviously were in the loop and they said, if the county commission adopted a resolution, what's our city calling it?
Oh, oh, oh.
So I said, let me, you know, I bring it up this evening and let me get back with those residents in the next week and if there's no objections, I'll put the resolution on.
Yeah.
Does the county resolution only work for unincorporated areas?
I don't know that, uh, because, you know, they, they, uh, had a resolution that was very vague on their agenda and then after the public input, they took a fifteen minute break and, and then it still wasn't acceptable. So they run with their county commission meeting and about an hour later, they came back with a resolution, but the attorney read it, but it was hard.
It may be worth the call that Howard tipped them.
We're going to get it.
As opposed to us discussing if they would include the, the cities in that.
I'll find out.
And I've got two items I'd like to see on the agenda specifically. And, and one of them is the sick leave payout issue as well as the, uh, city vehicle use to take home outside of the city limits issue.
Actually, uh, are you, is that your turn? Um, going back to the pending list, um, Cinemacourt, stop right away?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, but I thought we'd already said that was going to, that, that somebody was going to get ahold of him.
We were going to make an offer. We had to discuss an offer.
Cinemacourt?
We, we need to discuss what we're going to offer. Wow, I just remember.
No, they said they were not going to make an offer.
They wanted us to make the offer.
Correct.
Well, you were talking about that note piece. I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about the great case. No, no.
So correct, right? They want us to discuss and present.
Yeah, we, yeah, we need to, yeah, you, you're responsible. I said that, well, this is, I think we should, something in the effect that we should be out of this anywhere, vacated or something, I don't know.
But we didn't make a decision.
No, no, that's, no, I'm saying that was your comment and then it died.
And it just kind of.
That conversation died at that point, yeah, but something, the council needs to take some action. One, one word, one word of you up, yeah.
That's what Bill, uh, the, the two items you brought up, is that, uh, is that the purview of the council to discuss those things or is it the city manager?
It's the personnel policy, which also, like I dropped off here too, I had the personnel policy for.
Is that, I mean, is that in our scope of thinking about or is it, for the take home policy or city vehicles or, or the?
One, what, there's like.
Well, I, I, the personnel policy certainly is the purview of the city council. However, the, uh, issue of the, uh, sick leave payout, personnel policy probably applies under the personnel policy to maybe twenty-five or thirty percent of the employees. Seventy percent of the employees, um, are either in a bargaining unit or in the process of forming a bargaining unit, which gives a different, uh, process that has to be followed to make that change. Because if you amend the personnel policy, it affects those who are non-unionized. But those who are unionized or, or in the process of unionizing, there's, there's different procedures that you have to follow. And also with the union contract or some issues with the retirement plan, it's not a simple, we're going to get rid of it, but it is.
Well, to keep it simple, maybe we can just make this apply specifically since we're just doing it like what was suggested, just for the interim until the KPG and everything comes out. Maybe we do it just for examples. Maybe we just make it an, an exam policy.
Tell me what you mean by that.
Non, non-union.
Non-union, okay.
Non-union staff. Second? I'm sorry. Non, non-union or non-potential to be union because of all the issues that we've got to deal with that.
And, you know, if the exempted employees are in one class, then you have the others that are non.
Non-exempt, non-union.
Yeah. And, and as your manager, um, I, I, I have to tell you that if, if this applies only to non-union, there's a good likelihood that you will see union effort in, in other areas. I mean, it's just, that's just a fact of like, I've been in this business thirty-five years.
That's why I think if we keep it to exempt, we're, we're okay. Non-exempt is really, the, the, the issue that we brought up was the, the, the deleterious impact to the city if, if four or five people decide to punch, uh, all at once, uh, because of the payout of their accumulated sick, sick leave. And I believe we're talking, we're talking exempt people in that, in that discussion, no?
No, uh. Sixty percent are, are either union or, um, non-union but non-exempt. There's only two exempt, the rec, record myself. We'll, we'll, we'll put it on and you can, you know, we're not going to discuss it.
Yeah.
I think I still highlight this review of competitive bidding, you know, for the grant rates. I don't know, the, the only reason I think is that we might have some grants come up and we're going to have to write one, but we don't have a plan or RFP or, or how we're going to write the RFQ. If you think we have a good handle on it, we don't have to discuss it, but I'd really like to figure out how.
Yeah.
It's just a question, we have all decided to the agenda, is, what's me?
Well, we need to, we need to discuss this because I have, I've had this on there for a while and that is, so we don't go through the scan review process for appointing board members.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's very important and, and my stuff keeps getting bumped and bumped and bumped and bumped and, um, I also had on here a, a review of the per, personnel policy and that came off the list.
Who was that on here? I, I.
I requested it, I, I.
Yeah.
We only take them off when, when we think we put them on the agenda.
But that, the reviews for appointing board members, it's very, it's time consuming and there needs to be, I mean, I would, we're appointing just based on name and no interview. And I'm not really comfortable with that, so I mean, you'd be dead horse.
What, what are you looking for from back from staff on that? A recommended policy or do you want to just discuss the proposals and suggestions as the basis of the policy?
I don't know, maybe, maybe we should, we should contact other municipalities to see what they do when they reappoint board members. Um, in every interview, do you have to reapply? Are there term limits? No, I can certainly call it online.
You may want to hetero-renew the viewing process.
Yeah.
Because maybe, you know, usually, there's no way you can know all our board members, you know, they're.
Well, I understand that, but.
You know, so if you interview, if you're looking at a, a, um, alternate to move up, your candidates are already with them, so that's not a bad idea.
Well, we can talk about it if this, if we need to.
All right.
And then on the personnel policy chair, what?
I was hoping instead of a workshop to go through it, um, but.
And actually, I don't think we, we came to an agreement yet, whether it was in our purview or not, to discuss the take home of the vehicles. You might want to do that as the city manager, come back and tell us what you did.
The, uh, uh, issue of take home vehicles ultimately, the decision rests with the city council. I don't know how it will be implemented. You typically be up to the city manager.
Okay.
You know, it's a policy decision, so we'll put it on and, and again, provide a breakdown of those vehicles that do go home.
Okay. Is that enough?
No.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Agenda.
Are there items on this agenda that you want to delete? Because we're going to be, if all these items are on, we're going to be looking at the same, you know, are, is there a desire to perhaps hold an additional meeting, workshop some of these items? You know, I, it's, it's counterproductive to put together an agenda that, that presents problems.
I'm not going to time any. I'd like to look at the ten and eleven being pushed. Uh, I, I know administrative fees, but we, we talked about those a little bit and we could probably push that.
No, 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 no. I've been pushing for that for months.
Well, but if you push it so much, you've got twenty-one items on it.
Well.
So what, what would you like to not push for?
Well, I don't know why we're reviewing sign revisions. We have a very extensive sign ordinance.
That's only a question of the citizen who is representing a group of business who wants to address the cap. That's.
What's up with the, that far, is, you going to be ready to go?
We'll have to get the information back. You know, that was the date we identified.
Can any of these be IOs?
I can.
The, the information, even, even the update on the fire truck. Uh, some of this stuff, Mike, and it's, it's almost like a consent agenda, but, you know, maybe just some stuff that you could just tell us what's going on.
Is it saying, can we make that part of your comments?
We had to talk about that too, way in the beginning about doing a consent agenda. And if you want to discuss it, you pull it.
And, and some stuff we could just go through because.
How about we discuss a consent agenda?
Discuss that. You got brought that up a year ago and we didn't have enough to consent it on.
Oh, yeah.
So, but, but it, it does work pretty, pretty well. But maybe some things that you can just present us and say the fire truck is fixed or something.
And I'm thinking the beach caster, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, just, if, if Steve wants to give you an update.